Start the meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 8:02. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Okay. All right, Board of Education accepts the minutes of the Board of Education meetings held on May 12, 18, and 24, 2021, as detailed in the Friday mailing. So moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mrs. Dreska. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye opposed. The Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the Treasurer's Report for the month of April 2021, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mrs. Reed.
Sorry, we couldn't hear you, Mrs. Reed.
Okay, any questions or comments? Those in favor? Aye opposed. The Board of Education approves the Personnel Actions Report dated June 9, 2021, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. Because this involves the names of individual staff members, we do not discuss it in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, I will turn the meeting over to the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Kanning.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here. It's lovely to have such a large audience for really what is one of the nicest evenings of the year. Before we move on to celebrate our retirees and commend our tenure candidates, just a few things for everyone to know. First, our end of year celebrations, all of our parents have been notified of what is, I think, a pretty big end of year for us. We are doing everything in person. A lot of work has gone into it, and we're really excited and proud to celebrate our fifth and eighth graders moving up and our 12th graders moving on. I want to recognize some of our amazing students. I want to recognize Rachel Lyons, who is the winner of the Nassau County Youth Council Poetry Contest. You can read all about her. She is on our social media and our website. What a just an amazing young lady. I want to congratulate Jessica Darcy, Thalia Cantone Leon, Rochelle Saunders, and Reina Palmer for not only winning first place in the Medical Marvels Contest with Northwell Health on their documentary on gun safety. They were also asked to be part of a documentary with Northwell Health. We filmed it a couple of weeks ago. One of the Northwell Health employees is the head doctor in charge of pediatric trauma. And so that was really quite an experience, and it really just speaks to the partnership that we have with Northwell, but the amazing students that we have in our community. I want to share some more good news. The high school received a gold star, which is the highest level, as a designation, designated school for no place for hate. I honestly couldn't think of a more appropriate time in all of our lives to really be focused on that and to know that our high school has this sort of badge of honor and is working toward this noble goal. I just want to remind everyone, if you have not seen our Hello Neighbor project, it'll take a look on our website. You can also go to the tennis courts at the high school and take a look at them. They're hanging up on the fence. If you want to be inspired by young people, I would tell you, take your family and spend, you know, 20 minutes, you will feel just hopeful for our future. Again, our high school, for two years in a row, has been identified as a best high schools in New York State and in the country on the U.S. News and World Report list, so we're proud of that. I want to mention that Baldwin was highlighted three times on the national level this last couple of weeks. We had a full 30 minutes dedicated to our academy program on Metro Focus, PBS's Metro Focus, which they filmed before the pandemic, and then we shut down. And so we had to refilm part of the interviews, but I thought they did a really nice job. You certainly learn a lot about what's happening in our schools. And if you ever, ever, ever wanted to be impressed by young people, just take a listen to our high school students, because not only are they amazing young people, but they represent us well every single time they have an opportunity. In addition to that, there was a launch for PBS National. So this is PBS from around the country. Every year, they do something, they used to call it American Graduate Day. This year, they changed it to America's Path to the Future. It's all on CTE programs, and our new Education Secretary Miguel Cardona was the first speaker. I was invited to be on a panel with some other distinguished educators from around the country. I will tell you that I mentioned Baldwin at least 100 times. And when I watched it, we were mentioned at least, at least five of those made it into the final cut. So Baldwin was well-recognized there as well. And lastly, in that arena, I was part of an Ed Week online summit. Same thing, I do my best to make sure that Baldwin becomes a household name. And so that was lovely for us as well. Last two things, I just want to share about the pre-K grant, the pre-K allocation that was made at the state level. There is some misinformation that is floating around, and I think I have always been very diligent in making sure that if there is misinformation, that clear it up right away, because I do not ever want people to think something that is misleading or not exactly right. So the state has allocated money toward a pre-K program for Baldwin. It's in the neighborhood of, you know, $548,000. Sounds like a lot of money. We do not have a pre-K program, and so between startup costs and things like that, it's not as much money as you think. That aside, we are in the process, the very, very beginning process, of figuring out if this is something that we can do, because we never want to start something that we can't continue and can't sustain. And so what I want the community to know is that we are certainly dedicated to educating all of our young Baldwinites. We have to do it in a responsible way. And so we are in the very beginning phases of figuring out if this is a program that we could not only start, but sustain. And so if we are able to do that, we will certainly get that information out to you. What I would say to you is to please go to the source. If you want more information, we will be posting on FAQ on our website. Our website is our voice. And so I would say to you, that is the best place to go if you have any questions. And certainly, if you need more information, there is always somebody that is willing to answer your questions. Last, I just want to share that, you know, we have been planning for about three months at least for next year. We have been working on multiple scenarios. I know that there are some people much further north than here that thinks it is very easy to just open school and to continue to change the guidelines around what it means to open schools. I just want you to know, it's not that simple, right? We don't just say, okay, it's September, we're opening schools, go to your classrooms, everything's great. There's a tremendous, tremendous amount of work that goes into making sure that we open successfully and that everyone is prepared. So we have been working for that between three and four months at this point. I want to share with the board and with the community that we have gotten no guidance whatsoever from Albany. And there is no fault there, it's just a fact. And so we are moving forward with full in for next year, because we believe that's in the best interest of all of our kids. And we're very hopeful for next year, very hopeful for next year. We are continuing to monitor any guidance that comes out. We will do for next year what we did this year. We promised we would keep your kids safe. We promised we would keep all the adults safe. I think we did a good job at doing that, and we will continue to move that forward. But one of the things that we have definitely learned is that we need to get kids out of their homes, they need to be in school, they need to be socializing with their friends, and they need to be learning with one another. That is the best environment for them. So we are continuing to plan, we have moved forward, we will continue to move forward. And as we know more, we will share with you. Last thing on that same topic, I would be remiss if I did not thank again, which I have done all along, but this past week really amplifies the reason for my constant thanking of the Baldwin community. You know, there was information that was put out very late on Friday. We put out communication to our community. Things were changing over the weekend. There was some bad behavior, let's call it, in other places. Our community was, continues to be, has been just absolutely outstanding. There's no other words really to use. And, you know, we will continue to move forward, but this community, some of the stories that I hear in other places, you know, it is discouraging, it's upsetting. And Baldwin has been exceptional. And so on behalf of everyone, on behalf of my team, on behalf of the teachers and the administrators who go to work every day in support of your children, I just want to thank you for that support and that faith and that courage that you have for us. So having said that, we are here tonight. The next two sections are to honor our retirees, who, my guess, are all going to get on a plane on July 1st and, you know, travel around for the next six months. I mean, I expect a postcard from every single one of those locations. I am going to turn it over to Mrs. O'Hagan, who is going to continue in the great Baldwin tradition of reading the whereas for each honoree who is here. What we will do is this, everyone except Mrs. O'Hagan will shut their screen so that we can see Mrs. O'Hagan and the honoree. Mrs. Pratt, you are going to bring up the honorees, one at a time, of the people who are here. So if you are an honoree, either as a retiree or a tenure candidate, please make sure that your name is your full name, otherwise, we will not be able to find you. So Mrs. O'Hagan, I leave this to you.
Thank you, Dr. Kanning. What I'm going to do is I'm going to announce the name of the retiree and his or her supervisor. Then I'm going to read the whereas statements. And at the end of that, if the retiree would like to say a few words, we would be more than happy to have you do that. The first person on the list this evening, the first retiree, is Anna Cologne, and her supervisor is Unal Karakis.
Second, Mrs. O'Hagan. Turn your mute on. Turn your mute on and turn your screens on.
Should I proceed, even though I do not see the pictures? I know that Anna and Unal are present. And you are on mute, Dr. Kanning, so I can't hear what you're... Ah, there you are, Karakis.
All right, and we just need to get Mrs. Cologne to turn her screen on. There we go.
Ah, there we are.
You're on, and I'm off.
Okay. Anna Cologne has been an exceptional, dedicated school monitor for 20 years at Brookside School District. And whereas Mrs. Cologne provided all children who came across her path with confidence, character, kindness, and love to carry with them in their lives. And whereas Mrs. Cologne has been a loyal employee and has given her all to Brookside's students and staff, her Brookside family knows her to be one of a kind, and she is greatly missed already. The Board of Education and District Administration thank her for her many years of dedicated service and wish her a happy, healthy retirement with her daughter Patricia, her grandchildren, and her entire family. Congratulations, Anna. If you would like to say a few words, just...
So if I can also say, Mrs. Cologne, you've dedicated years of service to Brookside School. I miss you already so much. Mrs. Cologne always has a smile on her face, just like you see now, when she's interacting with children and our staff. She always says the nicest thing and brightens up anyone's day. Our students have been so lucky and fortunate to have had the opportunity to meet you and to be guided by you. You are such a dedicated, loving, wonderful person, and we have been just so fortunate at Brookside School to have you with us. And I echo what was just shared, we will miss you very much, Mrs. Cologne, and we wish you the best in your retirement, and we thank you for all you've done at Brookside School. So on behalf of everyone at Brookside, we thank you so much and wish you the best of luck.
Best wishes. Okay. Okay, next retiree is Elizabeth Gambitsky, and her supervisor is Anthony DiNapoli. Hi. My apologies, Andrew. Elizabeth Gambitsky has served the Baldwin Union Free School District since 1987 as an elementary teacher, serving the district for over 30 years. And whereas Mrs. Gambitsky's hard work and diligence always set her students up for academic and overall success and consistently went above and beyond her teaching responsibilities to support Baldwin Middle School, Baldwin School District, and the Baldwin community. And whereas Mrs. Gambitsky's involvement outside of the classroom include, but are not limited to, Multicultural Week, Teacher for a Day, National Honor Society Faculty Council Member, ILS Curriculum Alignment and Development, Shadow Day, Science Symposium, just to name a few. And whereas Mrs. Gambitsky always sought opportunities to grow professionally and displayed a willingness to try new ideas that could benefit her students and classes, always included her students in her new approaches by asking for student feedback regarding new activities and techniques. And whereas Elizabeth was commended on numerous occasions for her willingness to support her colleagues and new teachers, always there to offer help and assistance to any colleague in need. The Board of Education and District Administration and Baldwin Middle School appreciate Mrs. Gambitsky's contributions, years of service, and commitment. Her dedication to her students will always be remembered, and she has instilled a forever impact on the lives of her students. We wish Mrs. Gambitsky health and happiness in her retirement. Congratulations. Can we unmute her, please?
Thank you, Ms. O'Hagan. I just want to quickly say that it has been a great honor to have spent my teaching career in the Baldwin School District and to be a part of the wonderful Baldwin community. I've made lifelong friends, I've had amazing colleagues and administrators, and I've been blessed to teach over 2,000 students. I did it on the calculator earlier. And they've been wonderful students, and I've worked with wonderful families, and I just hope they've learned as much from me as I have learned from them throughout my teaching career. I'm going to miss the wonderful Baldwin community, and Baldwin will forever have a special place in my heart.
The best of luck.
Thank you.
Best of luck. Thank you so much, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Okay. The next retiree is Anne Marie Taramina, and her supervisor is Dr. Neil Testa.
I know she was here.
I know, I can see. There you are. There you are. Anne Marie Taramina has served the students with dedication for 20 years as a high school teacher in the Baldwin School District. And whereas she taught AP Literature and Composition, sophomore English classes utilized a variety of instructional strategies to improve the cognitive abilities of students, displaying an infectious enthusiasm for teaching and learning. And whereas she demonstrated outstanding leadership, both inside and outside the classroom, dedicating her life to creating a warm, nurturing, inclusive learning environment for all students, taking time to review speeches from students who were poised to deliver some words at senior graduation, gently instilling the confidence and support they need to speak in front of a large audience. And whereas she has made considerable contributions to our Baldwin High School family over the years, acting as a member of the selection committee for in recognition of excellence, participated in the hiring of new staff, co-advisor for the student publication, The Golden Wave. And whereas she has participated in numerous school events, including the talent show, plays, also being recognized by the PTA for excellence in education as recipient of the PTA Honorary Life Award, earning respect throughout her tenure in Baldwin. The Board of Education and District Administration congratulate her for all she has done for our students and school and wish her health, happiness, and the best as she begins this new chapter of her life. Congratulations, Anne Marie.
Ms. Taramina, unmute yourself so we can hear your wonderful voice.
Sorry, thank you. It has, thank you, Ms. O'Hagan, for your kind words. And it has truly been a privilege to have been part of the Baldwin family and the Baldwin High School. They really are, especially my beloved English department. They have been like family. I have been privileged to work with such dedicated and erudite colleagues. And just as Ms. Gambitsky said, I too have learned so much from my students. I often say to them, you know, that they come uninvited into my heart, and they lodge there, and that's fine. You know, every year, I say, I'm not going to get that attached again, and I have failed time and time again. They just become part of who you are. One of the great surprises about teaching is the impact that students have, that they have on individual teachers. It is a gift, and again, it is a noble profession. I'm proud, so proud to have been part of it. Thank you so much for this recognition.
Thank you for your service and your friendship. Thank you, Anne Marie.
Dr. Testa.
Okay, our next retiree is Annette Gorring, and her supervisor is Dr. Testa.
Sorry, my mistake. We need to bring Dr. Testa back.
There you are.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Okay. Whereas, Annette Gorring has served public education as a clerk typist and served the students of the Baldwin School District for 20 years as a member of the Guidance Department. Whereas, Annette Gorring has devoted considerable time with conscientiousness and enthusiasm to helping students and staff members in the Guidance Office with every detail under control, whether she was working on college applications, student working papers, teacher reacher, senior college bound night, college and career fair, senior awards night, parent teacher conferences, National Honor Society ceremony, and in ensuring the organization and execution of the graduation ceremony each June. Whereas, Annette Gorring has faithfully supported our students in their extracurricular activities by serving as an intramural supervisor, sports night supervisor, and student chaperone. Whereas, Annette Gorring has truly embodied the concept of Baldwin family with always celebrating her colleagues' birthdays and special occasions, bringing the Guidance Department closer together. Whereas, Annette Gorring embodies the spirit and values of our schools and the district at large. She loved supporting our students and would often be seen at various high school musical productions and school-based events. She especially took pride in the graduation ceremonies, where she played a huge role behind the scenes. Whereas, Annette was always efficient at her job in the school counseling office and always kind to both students and staff, and her great sense of humor brought much sunshine and laughter to the office. And whereas, Annette Gorring has professionally executed her duties as clerk typist in the Baldwin School District, the Board of Education, District and Building Administration thank and commend her for her outstanding service and commitment to the district and wish her health, happiness, and many memorable moments with her husband Phil, children Drew, Tommy, Deanna, her daughters-in-law Christina and Jessica, and her new grandson, Logan. Congratulations, Annette.
Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure, thanks, Neil. It's been a real pleasure working for 20 years in the high school Guidance Department. I have the best coworkers, the best bosses, and such great memories I will take with me, and I'm just looking forward to retirement, but I really will miss everyone greatly. Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next retiree is Elizabeth Mattos, and her supervisor is Michelle May. Whereas, Elizabeth Mattos has served the students with dedication, compassion, grace, and excellence for 21 years as a teacher in the Baldwin School District, assigned to Schubert, Brookside, and Meadow School. And whereas, as a proud alumnus of our district, she demonstrated outstanding leadership both inside and outside the classroom, dedicating her life to creating a warm, nurturing, and inclusive learning environment for all students, displaying an infectious enthusiasm for teaching and learning. And whereas, she utilized a variety of instructional strategies to improve the cognitive abilities of students and develop their reading skills as well as a love of literature. And whereas, she successfully pivoted to remote learning with patience, creativity, and flexibility, and demonstrated excellent skills in planning instruction and assessing her students, setting high standards, and challenged her students to think critically and instilled a joy of learning. And whereas, as a kindergarten and first grade teacher, she demonstrated the ability to multitask, tying shoelaces, wiping away tears and runny noses, and a hug whenever necessary. As a fourth grade teacher, she put her heart and soul into teaching her students and successfully prepared them for three New York State assessments. And whereas, she actively involved parents in the life of her classroom and was an active member of the PTA, the Board of Education and District Administration congratulate her for all she has done for our students and the school district and wish her the best on her retirement with her husband Andy's, children Lara, Jamie, Alex, Amanda, and her loving grandchildren, Easton and Elle. Congratulations, Elizabeth.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
Best wishes of a wonderful retirement.
Thank you.
Okay, our next retiree is Mary Kelleher, and her supervisor is also Michelle May.
Hello.
There you are. Hi. Mary Kelleher has served the students with dedication as a teacher aide in the Baldwin School District, assigned to the middle school and Meadow Elementary School. And whereas, she executed her classroom responsibilities with great patience, creativity, and kindness, developing a strong relationship with her students, parents, and teachers. And whereas, she always smiled, laughed, and offered reassurance to students to let them know that she cared, demonstrated a high level of skill and dedication to executing the plans and preparing the materials for the assigned teacher. And whereas, she has been a close confidant to Megan Morelli. And whereas, she brought a wealth of knowledge to her position by sharing her personal interests. The Board of Education and District Administration congratulate her for all she has done for our students and school and wish her best in her retirement and many years of enjoyment sailing across the Atlantic with her husband Chris and spending quality time with her children, Patrick, Thomas, Matthew, and the rest of her family. Congratulations, Mary.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. It's been my pleasure working in Baldwin. I miss you, Mrs. May. I miss everyone, and I'd like to also add that my children all graduated from the Baldwin School District, and they all have very successful careers, respectively, and I'm just very honored to have worked, lived and worked in the Baldwin School community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That was lovely. Thank you.
And Mary Jo, it's been a pleasure to know you.
I was just going to say, yes, we've known each other a long time.
Very long time. Thank you so much, everyone.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, our next retiree is Ellen Arrow, and her supervisor is Mark Gray. There you are. Hi, Ellen. Whereas, Ellen Arrow has served as an elementary teacher in the Baldwin School District for over 32 years, giving each of those years to the children and community at Plaza Elementary. And whereas, she has been named a PTA Honorary Lifetime Award recipient for her achievements and service to the Plaza School community. And whereas, Mrs. Arrow is known to have crafted a rhyme or two, both in the classroom and for grade-level reports to the PTA. And whereas, she is the first to raise her hand when an extra one is needed, be it for field day, testing, special projects, National School of Character application process, or just to be there for a staff member, family, or student in need. And whereas, Ellen is a beloved colleague who has brought bundles of energy into the workspace each and every day, putting on smiles for miles or smiles in the tiles during her year remote teaching. And whereas, Ellen Arrow has personally instilled the high expectations of the district and Plaza School into over 750 students through her career, loving each one of them and making the world a better place. The Board of Education and District Administration thank her for her years of dedicated service and wish her a happy, healthy retirement with her two adoring children and spending more time with her husband and traveling together. Congratulations, Ellen. Best wishes.
Thank you. I wrote something because I didn't think I'd be able to speak. And it's not in a poem. I'm sorry. I just said Baldwin's been my second home for more than half my life. The last days of my career are racing by. All of this stuff. I find myself reminiscing and getting very sentimental and obviously emotional. I have a lot of fond memories, and I'm going to treasure them always. I've enjoyed being part of this community and teaching amazing children and learning from them, too. Thank you to all the parents who share their children with me and for their support. Now, I may be biased, but I know that Plaza, led by Mr. Gray, is where the heart is. I've been so fortunate and blessed to work with the most hardworking, dedicated, creative people who always go the extra mile to make a difference. I'm proud to call these people my colleagues, at least for now, and friends. It was a very atypical year for everyone and a strange one to end my career with. No hugs, feeling a little bit isolated. And having to teach remotely from school was stressful and challenging for me. But let me tell you, this old dog learned many new tricks. The biggest benefit of teaching remotely was being able to see the smiles on my children's beautiful faces. Everything has a silver lining. And now, after 32 years, it's time for me to finally graduate from first grade. Just know that Baldwin always has a special place in my heart. I want to congratulate all the retirees and all the tenure recipients as well. I hope that you too will one day be able to look back and get emotional about all the wonderful things that you experienced in your career. Thank you to everyone.
That was beautiful, Ellen. Thank you. Thank you. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Our next retiree is Susan Larick, and her supervisor is Sharice Young. I can't hear you, Dr. K.
I'm not seeing her here.
I can see her name, but I don't.
Me? Susan?
Yes. Turn your video on.
I have my video on. I'm sorry. We have a thunderstorm up here. I'm having trouble.
Oh, dear.
Sorry, we're having, I'm going in and out of internet. We have like major suns and thorns up here. I apologize.
Don't apologize. I hope you can hear what I'm saying. Welcome, anyway. Whereas, Susan Larick has served the Baldwin Union Free School District as a speech and language therapist for 32 years at Meadow School, Steele School, Lennox School, and the District Office. And whereas, Ms. Larick has supported students with disabilities in language, speech, and hearing, providing speech and language services to students at Steele School, Lennox School, Meadow School, addressing students' speech and language needs through the use of various research-based programs and approaches. And whereas, Susan has conducted thorough evaluations utilizing a variety of assessment tools, always working collaboratively with district building-level administrators, colleagues, parents, outside providers, always being knowledgeable, professional, and articulate. And whereas, she has served as the District's Committee on Preschool Special Education Chair for 16 years, closely working with parents to assist them in thoroughly understanding the process of referring their child to the CPSE, forming strong relationships with various preschool programs and providers, attending various meetings throughout Nassau County, representing the school district as the CPSE chair, working closely with clerical employees to meet the enormous paper demands associated with the CPSE process. The Baldwin School District wishes you very, thanks you for your service and wishes you well in retirement, Sue. Congratulations.
Thank you. I apologize that my face is not on screen, but I've been kicked off three times tonight. We're having horrible thunderstorms up here where I live. But I thought about this, and I thought, I have come full circle. I was hired by an amazing person, truly, who put the child, family, and community first, which I really feel is the Baldwin family. He taught me a common phrase that he said, "The taxpayer is our boss," which really is, when you think about it, true. I then went on to learn from the best. I learned from Dr. Michelle Gallo, and I learned from Sharice Young. I could not have been more blessed to have amazing bosses, amazing mentors, and amazing staff members that I have worked for. My years here are truly blessed. I leave here excited for my next chapter of my life, but at the same time, I leave sad that I'm leaving amazing people behind, and I don't want to do that. I think that Baldwin will continue to be an amazing place for the staff and the administration they have, and I'm happy to have been part of it all. Thank you.
Thank you, and best wishes.
Thank you.
Okay, our next retiree is Cheryl Kanowitz, and her supervisor is also Sharice Young. There you are. Whereas, Cheryl Kanowitz has served the Baldwin Union Free School District since 1989 as a member of the clerical unit, beginning her career in Baldwin in the Public Relations Office, later working within the Music and Arts Department as well as the Dean's Office at Baldwin High School, becoming a typist clerk within the Office of Pupil Services in July 1999, later promoted to senior typist clerk in September 2002. And whereas, Cheryl embodies the values and policies of our district and has been able to handle all situations with grace, including the growing job responsibilities over the years, taking on every challenge like a professional, using her judgment to analyze multifaceted tasks. Her positive outlook and foresight have been invaluable to the Pupil Services Department. And whereas, she is professional, efficient, hardworking, committed, diligent, dependable, resourceful, and thorough. The pupil services staff, including supervisors, faculty, administrators, and various outside agencies and schools, truly respect Cheryl. And whereas Cheryl has spent countless hours maintaining various spreadsheets and ensuring compliance of various deadlines, including referrals, evaluations, meetings, reevaluations, transitions, guardianship, and a host of others, maintaining a watchful eye when preparing and reviewing the monthly Special Education Board report, always adhering to the regulations governing the Committee on Special Education Procedures. The Board of Education and the District Administration wish to express their gratitude for her years of dedicated service and wish her a happy and healthy retirement with her husband Steve, her children Eric and Dana, and her beautiful grandchildren Skylar and Jackson. Congratulations, Cheryl. Best wishes.
Thank you so much, Sharice. It's been a pleasure. I don't know where Sharice went. It's been a pleasure working in Baldwin. It's become my second family. And I do miss everyone there.
It's nice to hear that repeated so often, that it's obviously not just, not unique to you, that a lot of people seem to feel that way. That's wonderful. We'll miss you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, our next retiree is Laura Kaufman, and her supervisor is Andre Propilo. There he is. Okay, we have you both. Whereas, Laura Kaufman has served the Baldwin Union Free School District for 20 years as a senior clerk typist. And whereas Laura has shown great flexibility and adaptability in that she has supported the Baldwin High School Library, Fine and Performing Arts Office, Office of Curriculum, and back to the Fine and Performing Arts Office. And whereas Laura delivered the highest level of professionalism and selfless dedication to her tasks, colleagues, and office mission. And whereas Laura supported the staff and students in the offices during the workday and attended countless student performances at night. And whereas Laura is enthusiastic, hardworking, resourceful, and self-starter, willing to jump into a complex task with a smile and a kind word. And whereas she has been the friendly face and voice to parents, students, staff, vendors, and the general public as they interact with the Fine and Performing Arts Office. And whereas Laura is widely known for her dedicated professional approach, faithful service, unflinching resolve to complete the varied and detailed tasks needed in the offices she supported and will be greatly missed by staff and administrators. The Board of Education, District Administration, Baldwin High School family, and the entire Fine and Performing Arts Department wish her health, happiness, and many wonderful moments with her husband Paul, son Drew, and daughter Alana in the next chapter of her life. Congratulations Laura.
Thank you very much. It's been my pleasure to work with so many wonderful people and I've had amazing bosses and the teachers that I've worked with over the years have, they're just awesome. You know, my coworkers, they all hold a special place in my heart. And Baldwin is my home away from home. And you know, we do spend a lot of time there and it's great that we have these wonderful friendships that, you know, we develop over the years and I'll cherish everything forever, you know. So thank you so much.
You're most welcome. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Our next retiree is Karen Furman and her supervisor is Ed Ramirez. I see you Karen. I'm just waiting for Ed to show up. Ah, there I see you. Welcome, Mr. Ramirez. Whereas Karen Furman has served the students of Baldwin as a nurse since September 1st, 1998, serving as the nurse at St. Christopher's School and the summer programs at Brookside Elementary and the Baldwin Middle School. And whereas she was an essential member of the nursing staff and has contributed to establishing safe and healthy learning environments for Baldwin students. And whereas she has always met the needs of students, parents, and staff with a caring approach and a warm heart. And whereas she has demonstrated commitment, attention to detail, and a sincere concern for the physical and emotional well-being of all the students. The Board of Education and District Administration thank her for her years of dedicated service and wish her an enjoyable retirement to be spent with her 60-year-old and 8-year-old grandkids, catching up with friends, traveling, and cooking with her husband. Congratulations. Best wishes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next retiree is Edwina Spinelli Cook. And her supervisor is also Mr. Ramirez.
We don't see Mrs. Spinelli Cook, so maybe we can move on to Mr. Carroll and if we see her, we will bring her up after.
Okay. Okay, our next retiree is Stephen Carroll and his supervisor is Mr. Ramirez. Hi Steve. Whereas Stephen Carroll is a product of the Baldwin Union Free School District, class of 1976, and a former captain of the Baldwin Bruin Football Team, who returned to teach in 1988. And whereas he has served the students of Baldwin as a physical education teacher, serving the students at Brookside, Lennox, Meadow, Plaza, Steel, Baldwin Middle School, and Baldwin High School. And whereas his students enjoyed innovative games and activities that focused on fitness, skill, and the development of character and the whole student. And whereas he coached many sports, most notably as the head varsity football coach for 33 years and retires with 165 wins, the winningest football coach in the 99-year history of the program. And whereas he will leave a legacy based not only on wins, but as a mentor, influence, and positive change agent in the lives of his former students and players. The Board of Education and District Administration thank him for his years of dedicated service and wish him an enjoyable retirement to be spent with his two sons, his grandkids, and his beautiful wife Patty. May it be full of long weekends out east and with time to continue your photography and other hobbies. Congratulations Steve.
Thanks Mary Jo. It's been a long time, Mary Jo, back from Brookside. First started with you there.
Yes.
Feels like the Oscars right now. I have to thank Ed. He put out a phenomenal farewell for me the other day. It was amazing. And then today, Dr. Tester did something very pleasant for me. They say if you love your job, you never work a day in your life.
That's right.
And in the 35 years, I can honestly say I never felt like I worked. I, I always enjoyed showing up for work every day and I enjoyed the community of Baldwin. As everyone knows, I went to Steel School like my whole entire family did. And it's a, it's amazing thing. I'm working with great people and I'm gonna miss it, but it is time. So thank you very much. Thank you everybody.
We're gonna miss you Steve.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
So Steve, before we demote you back to an attendee, I just want to know one thing. I just want to know if you're gonna continue wearing shorts throughout the winter months.
I'm gonna continue wearing shorts and I'm also volunteering for your next video. For the start of the year, so.
There you go.
A person in retirement.
Be careful. Be careful. You promised me.
Wear my tank top again.
I was just gonna say, I think you need to be careful of Steve.
I know. Dr. Kami beat me up on the last one, but I'll go.
I didn't beat you up. I tackled you. Get that.
Okay, there you go. Very good. Well done.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks.
I think that's it, Mrs. O'Hagan for this portion.
Yes, I think so too.
So we're gonna move forward. So just a, just a few notes. It's such an interesting meeting because we get to congratulate our retirees. Some of us get to admire our retirees for being able to retire and really start a new chapter of their lives. I want to congratulate every one of them. You know, we, we talk about Baldwin as being our Baldwin family and we mean it. And we, you know, we are about to celebrate the commencement of our 12th graders, but in many respects, this is a commencement as well because it's the beginning of a new chapter in everyone's lives. So on behalf of the, the district administration and our community, I just want to congratulate everyone. The other kind of bookend to this is our teachers who, and our teaching assistants, who are kind of entering, right? We have people exiting and people entering. And I want to just say a few words. To be a tenured staff member in any district is not easy. To be a tenured faculty member and staff member in Baldwin is, is an exceptional accomplishment. Because what we expect from our, our faculty and staff is nothing but the best. And that's not a cliche. That's actually true. So the folks that we will be honoring tonight have really spent the last three or four years really learning the Baldwin way and proving themselves. It is not the end of that. We do that forever. But it is my honor to call forward to start Mrs. Echelle May, who will start by saying a few words about Lisa Nassoff.
Dr. Kami, do you want me to, to turn my video off while?
I think so, because then they can be sent to your stage.
Okay.
Miss May, I'm gonna go off screen so that it's just you.
Good evening. Do I begin?
We're waiting for Lisa Nassoff to be on screen.
Understood. Thank you.
There she is.
There she is.
Okay.
You look fabulous.
Oh, thank you. It's a blazer.
Well, Dr. Kami, Miss O'Hagan, members of the Board of Education, members of our Baldwin family, and welcome, Miss Nassoff. Tonight, we celebrate you. We celebrate your hard work and dedication to our learning community. Miss Nassoff started at Lennox School and transitioned to Meadow School after realizing that she had a true passion for education. She comes to us with a law degree. She was a lawyer and transitioned after being inspired by working with young people. And her, the loss to the fields of law has been our gain. At Meadow School, she has jumped in and become a true member, a valuable member to our faculty by inspiring them with her strong sense of understanding of reading, of writing, and just her sheer passion in communicating with students and establishing a strong rapport with them. In her message to me earlier in the year, she said that she always loved learning and was inspired by her students to, again, to become a strong educator at Meadow School, but she's always thought of herself as a lifelong learner and willing to accept new challenges. And at Meadow School, she's demonstrated that from being the teacher in charge at lunch, which I'm sure her law degree comes in handy with resolution and working to support our students and helping them to resolve their, their, you know, issues and those little things that happen on the playground. But I think why she's so successful in that is because she truly gets with, to them at their level and connects with them and listens to them. She is a wonderful listener and with that, she offers great sound advice and guidance to our students. In addition, as a member of our Black History Month Committee, she's been instrumental in inspiring our students and encouraging, encouraging them to use their voice to share their learning with others. Her role in our presentation to parents and students was so valuable to me and I truly appreciate her encouragement and support and constructive guidance in order to make that program a success. In addition, this year, she's done an extraordinary job pivoting to the remote platform, working with the 15-1 team. She's been an instrumental member. It's been definitely a challenge, but she's found great strength in navigating the digital applications and using them to connect with her students and truly making learning on the digital platform engaging, which we all know a few months ago was a very daunting task. And she's made it seem seamless as we return to school in the fall. So I know the members of her 15-1 team would show their appreciation to her for her efforts in supporting our students remotely. And with that, she's also provided tutoring. Anytime I have a need and I know I can tap her and she'll say, "Sure, Mrs. May, whatever you need. I have your back." And she's been instrumental in, in supporting students that were on quarantine and we wanted to keep them engaged and part of our learning community so that when they returned to school, they were not behind. And she's been instrumental in supporting so many students. So it's with great gratitude, respect, and, and joy that on behalf of the Board of Education and Dr. Kami, we recommend you for tenure. So thankfully, just to say thank you and congratulations, and it's a joy and pleasure to work with you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. May. I just want to say a few words. It's been a long and twisted path for me to find my way to Meadow. And I have to say, not a place at the beginning of my career where I thought it would end up, but I am so happy to be here and in grateful to Mrs. May who welcomed me to Meadow. And Mrs. May has made Meadow more than just a school. It's a family and it is a true learning community, which is somewhere where I just want to be and I look forward to be to the end of my career. So thank you and thank you for this honor of granting me tenure. I truly appreciate it, Mrs. May, Dr. Kami, and the Board of Education. So thank you so much.
Thank you Lisa. Congratulations. Miss May, stay on the camera. There you go, Miss May. The whole crew you've got there.
Yes.
All right, you ready, Miss May? You're on.
Yes. Hi. Hi, everyone. Congratulations to the entire Romano family, because it takes a village, right? Ms. Romano, I remember our conversations and your interview when you were explaining your transition from being a registered nurse and working with students with disabilities or children with disabilities and how you were so inspired by the work that you saw your colleagues doing in education that you were motivated to transition. And I think that takes such great courage to transition from a career that you were very successful in to now in the field of education and being equally successful. You are such a dynamic and dedicated educator at Meadow School. And to see you transition from being a building sub, working alongside our professionals in our building and learning alongside them and continuing to improve your practice and transitioning now to being a highly regarded teaching assistant in our school, granting you tenure on behalf of our Board of Education and Dr. Kami is such a privilege and an honor to do. I can speak on behalf of Ms. Temple and Ms. Sandorffy that each year, they beg and plead to make sure that you're not reassigned to another partnership because they value your presence. They value your, as I said, your dedication to your students. You're there early and you're there late, making sure that you're prepared for the instruction for the day. Equally, as I've shared with Ms. Nassoff, you successfully pivoted to a remote platform. To see you with your flexibility shift from one classroom to go to your nook in another room to connect with your students virtually has really been extraordinary. And again, engaging, being diligent and making sure they're present, reaching out to parents to make sure they have what they need, being present on a monthly basis to disseminate all of the supplies and required tools to them. Meadow School is a successful learning environment because of your efforts and because of your dedication. You mentioned earlier in the year to me that you love being an educator. You love teaching. You said, you asked, you mentioned that you asked one of your students how they learned to solve multiplication. And then the student said to you, "You taught me. Don't you remember?" And you said, "Oh yeah, you know, that's true." And that's true. I mean, your students value and retain what you've taught them because you, you don't miss any details. You go into depth and you take time with them until they truly understand what, what the objective of your lesson. And I am very grateful for your role at Meadow School and thank you for your service and, and I'm proud of you. I'm proud to be a part of that journey to see you become one of our standout educators in this learning community. So again, I congratulate those by your side because I know that they're probably with you and you've given up some nights to be a part of our PTA meetings and our caravan parades and anything that we do. I know I can turn to you and see you by our side. So thank you. Congratulations. And I wish you many years of continued success as a part of the Meadow family.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much, Mrs. May and Dr. Gallo and Dr. Oh, thank you. Thank you very much, Mrs. May, and Dr. Gallo, and Dr. Kami, and the Board of Education. It's an honor for me to be receiving tenure this evening and to be a part of the Baldwin community. And as you said, Mrs. May, I was a permanence of three years, and then this is my fourth year as a TA, and I love every day of it. And really, one of the things that stands out to me at Meadow School is like the work ethic of everyone, really. The administration, you and Mr. Coca-Rali, and the teachers and the staff have a very high work ethic. And I'm always learning. I'm always learning from everyone, really. And it's a really beautiful community, and every day is a pleasure at school, especially with the children, just so enjoyable. And every day, I laugh. I laugh with the kids. So it's really a pleasure to be working at Meadow. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for this honor.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice background. All right, Ms. May. Andrea McDevitt. Cheryl, can you see she's on screen? I don't know if you're...
Oh, I don't see her.
Yeah.
But I'll begin.
If they're, you can start.
Okay. Well, I don't see everyone, but I'm so glad that you're present. And so I would imagine that Olivia and Grace and Garrett are by your side. Ms. McDevitt, it's such an honor to recommend you for tenure. This is your 14th year teaching, coming to Baldwin Schools from the New York City Public School System, and you brought to our building such passion and love and gratitude to social emotional learning. I have to start with that when I talk about your role at Meadow School, because you have played such an instrumental role as, I want to call you the guru of mindfulness for our building. As an instrumental key member of our wellness committee at Meadow School, you've facilitated workshops, you've led faculty meetings, and you've inspired and motivated our teachers and re-energized them with your weekly yoga sessions, especially during this pandemic. We've come together because of your influence, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. I show and express deep gratitude for your passion as an instructional leader at Meadow School in such a short time. You've helped strengthen our learning community. And then with that, as an educator with your students, working within our co-teach program and working with Mr. Chino for two years and returning to that next year, I thank you for your patience. Again, you know, it's such a pleasure to enter your learning space and sense calmness, sense that our students are focused and present when they're engaged in instruction with you. Your tone is always so well-received, and it gives them a space for, or the grace to make mistakes and to persevere despite whatever challenges and obstacles are presented to them. I appreciate you for always sharing your other passion with literature and sharing new texts with me, because it gives us another opportunity to find another way to share new insights with our faculty. I know that you've been passionate about teaching since kindergarten, when you had your kindergarten teacher, Mrs., I want to say rehearser, who inspired and motivated you. And you teach from your heart. I know that you've stated on many occasions that, this is your words, "You can't capture their heads if you don't capture their hearts." And not only have you captured the hearts of your students, but you've captured the hearts of the Meadow faculty. And once again, I thank you for your dedication. I express deep gratitude for your guidance and support during this year and the year since you've started, and I look forward to our continued partnership and strengthening the positive climate at Meadow School. And I look forward to many, many years working alongside you. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kami, Mrs. May, the Board of Education. I am blessed and honored to be a part of the Meadow family and the Baldwin community. Thank you.
Congratulations, Andrea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. May.
Thank you.
Dr. Callum Maris, thank you for presenting Meredith Foraker.
Good evening, Dr. Kami. Good evening, Ms. O'Hagan, members of the Board of Education and Baldwin community. It is my honor to speak to you today about Ms. Meredith Foraker. This is her, Meredith came to us from New York City. She taught in the Bronx and received tenure there before coming to Baldwin. And I remember from our very first screening interview, and I knew that she needed to be in Baldwin. She had passion about her students. She had passion about teaching. She had passion about curriculum. And you could see the joy in her face when she talked about what she would do with her students. And not just talking about English, but she also had the other piece of heart, which is her love of working with English language learners, which she didn't go into right away. She discovered that love because she had the opportunity to work with these students. And from that moment, I was so happy and thrilled that she came on board to work with us. And she's lived up to that expectation every single day and actually has gone above and beyond. Ms. Foraker teaches at both the high school and at the middle school, and I can find her, she is, does, I apologize, I'm tripping over my words, because I just can't express how, what an incredible member of the ENL department that she is. Not only is she beloved by her students, but also by other teachers in the ENL department and in the English department. She is what I like to call a quiet leader. She leads by example. And she is also willing to help others. And in the past couple of years, she has actually led some professional developments and has worked with teachers in the department, both in the English department and ENL department, to help them come up with ideas for things that they can do in their classroom and to get the students to produce, as our motto is, students as producers. Meredith is involved in almost everything that I put out there. I need someone for Saturday Academy, she's in. I need someone for Ninth Period Academy, she's in. And she also gives to the rest of the community by coaching after school as well. I don't know if there's anyone else who is as dedicated as she is. And I'm just so thrilled that she is going to be granted tenure by the Board of Education, because she really embodies the type of teacher that I want, or that I should say, all English language learners deserve to have. And she is just phenomenal and a superstar. And I know that this is going to be a long and wonderful career for her. So I applaud you, and I'm so thankful that you are working with us here in Baldwin.
Congratulations, Meredith.
Thank you.
Good evening. And I not only have the pleasure of talking about one phenomenal teacher, but I have two phenomenal teachers that are being awarded tenure this year. Ms. Alexandra Leong is, I, we usually hire, most of the teachers that we hire here in Baldwin come with lots of experience. And when Ms. Leong came to us, she was essentially fresh to teaching. She had done some substitute teaching, and I was immediately so impressed by the maturity that she had as a teacher, typically something that you don't see in first-year teachers at all. And in her demo lesson, she just blew us all away at the skill she had, the pedagogical knowledge that she had, and the connections that she made to students. And what's even more incredible about Ms. Leong is that not only did she start off so strong, but she has continued to grow over these past four years, and she is a leader. There are teachers who have been working in our department for 20-plus years, and they look to her for guidance. She is actually in charge of all testing at the high school. She is always contributing to the department. I know that if I need something, all I have to do is text her, and she gets it done. She, and not only is she just a, in terms of the added value to the department, I'm always love to walk down the hallway, because she actually teaches right outside my office, and I'll kind of just stand there and listen to her just teach and talk to students and watch her interact with students. And she is an amazing teacher, and I think that she brings to her students the experience that, I'm sorry, from her family. I know that her father was an English language learner, and he inspired her. And I think that she does him proud every day by helping students that are like him, like he was. And she's not only teaching them, but she's giving them a future. And I couldn't be prouder of the work that she does, taking students that barely know how to say hello, and then after three years, seeing them walk across the podium. So I'm very proud of Ms. Leong, and I'm thrilled that she's receiving tenure, and I look forward to many years of her being in the department and graduating even more of our students. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Alexandra.
Good evening, everybody. And it's my honor to talk about Ms. Abby Handler. She's been with us for four years now, and she's extremely professional and committed to academic excellence. She has taught various of classes, but her main classes that she taught is algebra at the middle school, eighth grade. Ever since that Baldwin has been, has the Algebra Four Initiative, she actually joined us at that point. So she's very creative and very detailed, or her detail, creative and detail-oriented. She actually, in the middle school, as the algebra team, she actually always keeps herself up to date with the latest instructional technology. So most of the, most of the other algebra teachers actually do leans onto her on, whenever there's an update on technology and so on. She's a great support. So I want to thank, thank her for that. We appreciate her for that. She's also a very strong data-driven person. So I enjoy my data talk with her all the time. Over the past two years, Mrs. Abby Handler actually contributed to modifying and adjusting algebra curriculum greatly. And there has been multiple modification to the curriculum to better support our student, including next year. Due to the pandemic, we have to, again, we adjust our curriculum again to further support our student, and she's part of that team. And lastly, she is, she has been the treasurer, and she still is the treasurer of the Baltimore Middle School Sunshine Committee, and she volunteered to participate in the mentoring program. And for the past, I want to say, four years, every single region's review classes after school weekends, Ms. Abby Handler has always been there. So she is 100% dedicated professional who has demonstrated excellency for, as a support for our student. So I want to congratulate her for her tenure.
Congratulations, Jamie.
Hi, Deanna. Dr. Kami, thank you for the opportunity to speak at tonight's meeting, represent the Fine Performing Arts Department. This is a big moment for us and the district as well. The tenure recommendation is among the most important processes and decision matrix the district leadership team can engage in. It is an incredible honor and a proud moment for me to speak briefly on Deanna Nykert, who has very successfully navigated the last four years of her probationary period with the music department. A high school music teacher of excellence embodies music education as a lifestyle, and Deanna, in fact, personifies this. Deanna's philosophy and commitment extends far beyond nine periods a day from September to June. She reads articles all the time. She's constantly sharing workshops. She has taken private lessons on secondary and tertiary instruments so that she could be the best player possible in front of the students that she leads. She's an excellent colleague and has become a trusted member of the department and someone that Building Administration and myself can come to at any time and get excellent results. And the best news for us here in Baldwin and for the thousands of students to whom she will encounter in her career is that the best of her abilities are yet to come. Keeping with the tradition, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about some things that make Deanna, on a personal note, someone that we're very happy to have on board. She fell in love with music when she was about five years old, watching someone play the oboe on TV. I'm not sure I knew what an oboe was till I was 14, and I love music. But shortly after that, her parents bought her a piano, and from that day forward, music has been an integral part of her life. And she's now the proud mother of one-and-a-half-year-old firecracker named Maya, who's somewhere nearby, who's also drawn to music. She's sharing something that made her laugh in the first three years. Reflecting on my first month, this is Deanna speaking, working in Baldwin makes me laugh. I directed a Pitt orchestra for the first time with only two weeks until the show, all while just starting my career in Baldwin. And this was the most intense and rewarding professional experience I ever had. That pretty much is Baldwin. That's how we get down. The interview process was sort of designed around this crucible that she's describing, and she laid out the most effective plan, and she hit it out the park. She's never looked back, and we're not looking back. We're happy to have her aboard. What's inspired her? She's been inspired by the music department colleagues and learn from them all the time, their tenacity and professionalism, coupled with the unique ways they bring their skills and genuine love for their craft into their classrooms. Again, she's selfless. She's talking about others, even in her most important moment. What's made her love being a music educator? I'll just share one more thing. When she stepped onto the podium for the first time at her demo lesson, she never thought she would say the words "That was so much fun" after an interview of any kind. Usually, the experience of an interview is nerve-wracking and goes by in a blur, but here, she had an immediate connection with the students and got a strong gut feeling that this was the right place for her. Her hopes and dreams for the future: to teach humanity, love, joy, and perseverance. To future to future generations through the art of music, to honor the music and mentors that shaped her most meaningful experiences and to pass these experiences on to students. If she's successful at that, the world will indeed be a better place. So with that, congratulations tonight, Deanna, and I want to thank Jordan, your husband, Yvonne and Victor, your mom and dad, for sharing you with us and we wish you all the best.
Congratulations, Deanna.
Thank you so much. I'm very grateful to be here.
All right, Shereen. All right. Good evening, everyone. Good evening to the Board of Education, Dr. Kami, Baldwin Community. This evening I have the pleasure of recommending and discussing tenure recommendations of three special education teachers. We're going to begin with Danielle Delatorre. Danielle, what sticks out in my mind about Danielle is Danielle interviewed with us on a very hot summer day. And while she was extremely nervous, as Danielle spoke about student success in the classroom and her experiences, you started to see the smile and the confidence come through. At that point, you could see her passion for teaching and educating youngsters and her passion for working in the special education department, her passion for English. Danielle is an English teacher in, at Baldwin Middle School. Danielle has a heart of gold. Danielle is a trooper. Danielle started our school year off of the 1920s school year, very, very pregnant. And she just could not stop. Danielle wanted to make sure that every aspect of instruction, classroom arrangement, data protocols, that everyone, everything was set up for her students that year before she went on maternity leave. And soon, right after school year began, Michael Joseph came into the world and so he's almost two. And Danielle is expecting baby number two and she never skips a beat. Danielle has been with us and she is an integral part of the English department at the middle school and especially the special education department. Some stories that Danielle has shared is one of her youngsters this year, a sixth grader, decided, you know, he was taking his time to pack up his books and get ready for the bus. And Danielle noticed that it was taking a little bit too much time, you know, students were waiting. So she went to go ask him, you know, what's taking so long? You, you need to hurry up. And the student shared with her that, you know, he didn't have to rush. His dad was the bus driver and that bus wasn't going to leave without him. Danielle made it a point to ensure that, you know, she checked in with him a few times to ensure that he knew that there were other students also waiting to get home. And so that he did need to be cognizant of that. Danielle has shared that she's inspired by her students. Inspired by their appreciation. Inspired by their drive and their perseverance. Danielle is also inspired by her colleagues that she works closely with. She works within integrated co-teach model as well as working on her own and self-contained classrooms. But Danielle is a lifelong learner. She's always willing to take on a new initiative, to be a part of anything new that is, is being taught within the English department. Danielle loves to see her students' reactions, those aha moments that I've learned it, I've got it. She loves to see the growth in her students. And one thing she has shared is that not many professions get to say that they have an impact in the lives of youngsters on a daily basis. And she finds herself very fortunate to work within the Baldwin School District and to be able to experience this every day. Danielle's hope for her students is that as they get older and as they prepare for their life after high school, that they will be able to take all the skills that they have learned and that they've been taught and apply it to their real everyday life. And that they become kind, independent and successful young adults. So I want to thank Danielle for her dedication to the department. Her dedication to Baldwin Middle School and her dedication to the students and the families of the Baldwin community. Thank you.
Congratulations, Danielle.
Thank you. And we have Andy Floresta. Andy is a secondary special education social studies teacher at Baldwin High School. Andy came to us fresh out of college. And she always, she shares that that was a nervous, a nervous jump to take, but she was excited about the opportunity. And I have to say that Andy is a go-getter. From the time she stepped foot in Baldwin to currently right now, Andy is always looking to grow in the profession of teaching. She always sees herself as a lifelong learner. Andy has worked with our students in the mock trial. And one thing that she has shared that she's inspired by is to watch her students during that mock trial process and witness them giving speeches. And these speeches are given in front of professionals that are the judges and attorneys. Andy has shared that their confidence, their professionalism, their preparedness is beyond impressive. As the advisor of step team also, Andy has seen the creativity of her students, the patience and the drive that it takes to put on a show. The skills of her students in and out of the classroom are truly inspiring to her. Andy, I, I think Andy has never missed an opportunity to grow. So if there is anything new, any initiative, she is the first one to say, "I'm onboard. I want to try it. I want to learn about it." She is inspired by her colleagues. She's inspired by her students. She loves to see her students grow in and out of the classroom. To watch them grow from their interest in, in just their personal lives and their hobbies. And then just to watch them grow as students. One of the biggest achievements that she has is seeing them become those Baldwin graduates. Watching them receive their diplomas and knowing that they are fully prepared to go out into the world and succeed in whatever they seek to do. Some of her hopes, and she displays this regularly. Some of her hopes is to continue to be a lifelong learner, never stop striving to be the best. And to always look at the art of teaching as not an end to the road, but there's always something new to learn. She continues to further her education in pedagogy. She works with her colleagues hand in hand. And I have to say, you know, Andy is, um, she's like the Spitfire go-getter. So Andy is engaged and we wish her all the best on that next step in life. And it's honor tonight to be a part of this presentation of tenure for Andy Floresta. Thank you, Andy.
Congratulations, Andy. I think your fiance is somewhere over there because I see you still looking over, huh?
Yeah. He's just our dog who won't stop barking. So, no, you don't have to think of it. It's okay. Here he comes.
There you go. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much.
All righty.
Last but not least, for the special education department, we have Catherine Paul Meyer. Catherine always knew she wanted to work with children. At a young age, you could find her playing school with members of her family. Catherine has had a personal experiences and, and a personal touch to her heart on the impact that a great teacher can have on a student. Catherine came to us from the New York City Department of Education and still remains in contact with some of her students. She's currently helping one of her youngsters that had to stop, you know, going to school. Catherine is helping that student work towards obtaining her GED. Catherine loves reading, going to the beach. She loves long walks with her dog. Catherine has a passion for education and a passion for watching her students grow. When she speaks about her students, there is like this joy in her eyes, in her face. She truly loves what she does. And a funny story that Catherine has shared, during her second year of teaching in Baldwin Middle School, one of her students was a reluctant reader. Not always wanted to read in any independent books, but Catherine was able to encourage this youngster to pick a book, any book. And he chose a cookbook. During one of the breaks in between the double period, she could see him leaning towards the backpack, kind of talking and she wasn't sure what was happening. So she walked over to kind of see what's happening over there and he was on his phone. She couldn't understand why he was on the phone. So she asked, told him he had to get off the phone, reminded him of school rules, only to find out that he was on the phone with the butcher shop because he went to order his bison for the meal that he was going to prepare that night. And Catherine interrupted this call. So he was a little upset that the butcher put him on hold to see what he had available and Catherine made him get off the phone. So there is never a day that is the same in her classroom. Catherine works closely with many of her colleagues within the English department, within the special education department. She has worked on initiatives like the Guinness Book of World Record. I think they were working on sandwich making. Catherine is inspired by not just her students, but also her colleagues. But she's especially inspire, especially inspired by a youngster that entered the district this year. After the year had begun, the student was behind grade level and was definitely struggling. And the student was worried about making friendships and worried about how far behind he was. And Catherine has shared that this student truly inspired her. He has accepted all assistance that's been provided. He studies hard. He doesn't give up. He asks questions until he understands. And she shared that watching him persevere through these hard times, these difficult times has truly inspired her. She loves to see when her students have those moments where they're now independent learners and they're not working, but still seeking the reassurance from her, but they can come to her and say, "Look, I got it. I understand it." So she loves to see when they're persevere and she loves to see their successes. Catherine hopes to become a better teacher as she's shared that, you know, there's never a time where as an educator you stop learning. And she plans to continue inspiring her students and being inspired by them. I want to thank Catherine for her dedication to the Baldwin Middle School and her dedication to the special education department. Her compassion and her love for her students and teaching, it's, it's unmeasurable and we thank you.
Congratulations, Catherine.
Thank you. That's such an honor. Thank you.
Darren, you're muted.
Was waiting for my kids to get quiet. Sorry. Good evening, everyone. So I was told I had a minute and for those of you know me real well, telling me to talk really fast is not, not a good idea. So I have a little script I'm going to go through and I'll be as clear as I can. So Ed shared with some, some information with us that we're going to talk about. And Ed has achieved a number of both professional and personal goals during the past four years. Personally, he qualified for and competed in not only the New York City, but also the Boston Marathons. Ed got married recently in the, in the last couple of years. I was at Ed's wedding actually, and I must say Ed's a better runner than he is a dancer. Ed purchased his first home this year. Congratulations. And saving the best for last, Ed and his wife Michelle are now preparing for welcoming their first baby. So congratulations to you both. And we're very excited to add to the Baldwin family. At a professional level, Ed's been presenting at conferences, sharing his innovative projects that we've been doing in the district. He's recently obtained the certification for both district as well as school level administration. And Ed speaks fondly of the, the difference he's making with working with teachers, with technology and more importantly, the students and sharing ideas and creating innovative activities. It's been an integral component of the, the new teacher trainings. He handles the third year cohort professional development. He's also been the lead on the summer PD and all the professional development we do during the breaks. And he's been instrumental in, in, in leading the change for technology in the district and, and, and he's been humored by, he was telling us a story about how, and his pre-coding class, he created, a student created a very intricate game portraying an episode of The Office where, familiar with the show where the logo is bouncing around the screen and the kid copied that same, that same game and he came out of it, which was very funny. And that's just amazing because I never thought Ed, myself and a student, three generations apart, could all be fans of The Office. That's great. Ed's been inspired by teachers' willingness to try and persevere through all the challenges of this past year with technology. It's been, it's been difficult for everyone and he's been amazed with their openness to try new ideas and to keep trying. That noble failure. He's really been impressed with the work that teachers have been doing this past year. He loves being an educator. He mentioned how he had a student take a pre-coding class, not once, but twice because the student felt that he needed more time to, to work on his skills. And he actually created a very challenging game that could never be done in one semester. So that, that was something that Ed shared as, as, as part of his experience. Going forward, Ed has a lot of hopes and dreams. As we transition back to in-person school instruction, his biggest hope is that we can take a step back, spend some much needed time to focus and reflect on effective learning with blended instruction, which incorporates thoughtful online and offline activities. Ed, we're all with you on that. So as a department supervisor, it's, you know, it's my goal, not only to nurture and help develop my team members, but also to inspire them, you know, so imagine my surprise when I'm thinking about today. And, you know, I realized that over the past four years, Ed's really inspired me. You know, particularly in the last year, as determination, as hard work, perseverance, we really were inspiring. At times, we, we, we face some really Herculean tests, particularly over the last year, year and a half. And Ed never complained about the work that we all were taking on. He always stepped up and he really never took his focus off on what was primarily important, which was the students and supporting the teachers. And my heart goes out to Ed for that. And, you know, he really kept us all going and it's, it's, we're very excited. Ed, since joining Baldwin here four years ago, beginning on day one, you can hit the ground running, you've been an integral part of the team, the district, and I look forward to a long and prosperous journey together and the exciting years to come ahead. For those who don't know, Ed and I had experience working together before in higher ed. So I had the privilege of mentoring Ed in a different career, in a different role and in different employment. And so I take really great pride in watching Ed from his twenties to where he is now, growing confidence, his skill, expertise, maturing into professional that he has become. And so congratulations, Ed, on your well-deserved tenure. Thank you.
Congratulations, Ed. Job well done.
Thank you.
Mr. Mignella, you're up. Mr. Mignella, you're up.
Good evening, everybody, good evening Georgia and your family, beautiful family. I want you to take a moment to recognize Georgia's children, her husband, I believe your parents are there also, Georgia, so it's great to see you and help us celebrate Georgia's celebration this evening. So Georgia is our ELA supervisor, our supervisors in the districts supervise grades and teachers in grades six through twelve. And they play an intricate role in instruction and various initiatives. Skills of any excellent supervisor, which Georgia is, is good communication skills, approachability, empathetic, confidence, positivity, and Georgia exudes all these. As you tell, Georgia is a mom, lovely wife, but she's also a leader and a lifelong learner. Georgia is meticulous and a diligent worker. In the four years that she's been here at Baldwin, she has zero absences. There are some times where I have to actually tell her, you should go home because you're not feeling well, and you could see it in her eyes. Even during this tough, difficult year, Georgia still never missed a day of work. Some interesting facts about Georgia is, prior to coming to Baldwin, she used to work for Francis Lewis High School in Queens, and she was there for about twenty years. During that time, she decided to experiment a little bit, and she started her own catering company, Truffles and Pearls. She actually, one of her customers was Arianna Huffington, the founder of the publication Huffington Post. Luckily for us, Georgia loved teaching and missed education and decided to become a school building administrator, and went back to school for her school building leadership degree. And we are fortunate and honored that she applied to the ELA position when it was opened four years ago. Outside of being an ELA supervisor for Baldwin, Georgia's raising three beautiful, amazing children, she supports her parents with their olive oil business, small family business where they import pure virgin olive oil, had the chance to try some of this olive oil, and it is amazing. So kudos to your family. She also, in her spare time, I don't know where she has this spare time, because we're always working around the clock, but she's also the school board president at Holy Resurrection Greek Afternoon School where she lives. She tutors students after school for SAT, ACT, and you can always find Georgia late nights at work, on email, as we're going back and forth, and she's always looking to find different innovative ways to reach students and support her teachers. Knowing these little interesting facts about Georgia, it's no surprise that her past times are to spend time for family, watch HGTV, Food Network, and of course, she's an avid reader, no surprise there being the ELA supervisor. So, there's no greater calling for Georgia than to be an educator. She loves to impact the lives of others, particularly students. She tries to be a leader and a role model for all her teachers that she supervises, as well as her colleagues. Our supervisor team is small, but very strong, and Georgia is a key component to our team. During her time at Baldwin, Georgia has developed into a confident leader. She has the confidence to stand above other voices, she's developed courage to make difficult decisions, and she has become champion to listen to others and support their endeavors. She truly supports Dr. Kami's vision of students being producers, and has helped lead several initiatives to make those realities come true. Her dreams for the future here are to be a part of the innovative and leadership work, to help prepare our students for the twenty-second century, and help bring the school districts and Dr. Kami's vision to fruition by providing sound leadership. And we know Georgia is the right person for this job, and thank, congratulations to Georgia on this joyous event of tenure.
Congratulations, Georgia, and the whole Emegdalo's family.
May I say a few words? With great respect, Dr. Kami, I say thank you for your leadership and believing in me and granting me tenure. Mr. Mignella, thank you for your guidance, support, and words of encouragement these past four years. Very proud and honored to be part of the Baldwin family, so I thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Weinstein, how are you tonight? Alright, so it's an honor to talk about Ms. Jerry Weinstein, who is our special education supervisor. Again, once in grades six to twelve. Jerry's another key ingredient to our team and also works tirelessly. She truly believes in teamwork and is a constant learner herself, and has always offered tremendous insight and feedback to me and to our team as we move forward with all our initiatives. Ms. Weinstein actually started her journey as a special education social studies teacher in New York City. She began teaching in Baldwin in two thousand and eight, and she was actually tenured, should I say, how many years ago? Approximately eleven years ago on this very same day, so we're coming along full circle. You know, I asked Jerry like what she likes to do in her spare time, and she had actually paused because she is so invested in Baldwin and our students that she doesn't think outside Baldwin and the Baldwin community. You know, all her answers and responses when we talk is always about Baldwin, the Baldwin students, and how to support all the students that she helps, you know, and teachers that she helps oversee. But after I was kind of poking a little bit, I did find out that Jerry did want to run the marathon, New York City Marathon. So Ed, if you're looking for a partner, certainly call Jerry in your future races. Jerry also likes to go to the beach when she can, and is hoping that is able to resume traveling when COVID kind of dies out completely. Jerry's passion for education began as a young adult, where she was hoping to bring change to the world. During her journey to become a supervisor of special education, she continues to be inspired by her fellow colleagues, teachers, students, and the Baldwin community, which welcomed her to this district. Jerry loves seeing students forge their own path to personal success. One of her main goals is to see students soar beyond their wild imaginations, and this is what drives her daily ambition. So Jerry's also, a little anecdote note, is working on her doctorate degree in educational leadership. And the primary focus of her research is on transitional planning. Once again, this was to show her dedication to Baldwin and to the population that she most is concerned about. So I asked Jerry one time what, you know, made her laugh and what inspires her. Jerry noted that something that both inspires her and makes her laugh is going back to one of the Challenger basketball games, and for those of you that have never been to a Challenger basketball game, I do invite you to attend them. Mr. Ramirez and Ms. Weinstein and the entire team does an amazing job organizing these events. But during one of the halftime shows, the life skills teacher, support staff, and other staff members all performed and completed a halftime routine. Jerry says she has it on video somewhere, but she won't share it with me. The dedication and joy that was witnessed by all at that halftime show is just evidenced by Jerry's ability to supervise that group of teachers and staff members. And then having developed a philosophy of inclusiveness, of being involved and just being innovative. Jerry's future hopes and goals and dreams are to continue to thrive and work in Baldwin. And she wants to continue to help students struggle with their reading or social interactions. Really looking forward to next year as all students come back to school to help support them and challenge them to live a truly happy and fulfilled life. I believe that Jerry, you are also joined potentially in a different link, but your significant other, Mr. Daniel Weiss is with you, your parents, Bertha and Joseph Weinstein, your sister and her family, Danielle Adam, and your nieces, Adriana and Samara are with us this evening. So thank you to your family for sharing you with us. I know the hours you put in are endless, and I thank you for your dedication, I thank you for your creativity. I thank you for your honesty and all you do for Baldwin and for the Board of Education, so congratulations on tenure.
Congratulations, Jerry.
Thank you so much, it's an honor and a pleasure to work with the Baldwin family.
We are all gonna come back now.
One more, Dr. Kami?
Oh, you are hundred percent right. How could I forget Locke Young? Sorry, Locke, alright, I'm going off camera. Back to you.
Right, Mr. Young is definitely joined by his amazing wife and supportive wife. Mr. Young, is your baby sleeping, or is the baby able to join us this evening for this joy? Alright, so Mr. Young is our math supervisor, and I'm fortunate to be working with such an amazing team, and Locke just really rounds out our team. He has amazing management skills, he's adaptable, confident, he's an extremely diligent and conscientious leader. And he has a remarkable work ethic. Locke and I, and I apologize to your wife, often email Locke at sometimes at ten, eleven o'clock at night with an idea that I have about something, right now it's our middle school Richard Summer Program, and Locke immediately replies. So again, I apologize to your lovely family for always bothering you at night, and we go back and forth until one of us reluctantly says, alright, goodnight, we have to go. Typically, that's me, because Locke will continue to go to have our discussions. Locke is always prepared for meetings. I actually remember when Locke was interviewing with Dr. Kami, Dr. Gallo, and I, during one of the interviews, we were asking Locke a question regarding how he interprets data and uses data to inform instruction. Locke, being so prepared, went down, took out his computer, opened it up, and walked us through a slide deck analyzing some Baldwin's region's data, and displayed to us on the spot all the work that he did and how he would add to our team. For those of you that may not know, Locke was actually born in Hong Kong and immigrated to the United States in nineteen ninety-seven. Mathematics has always been a passion of his since he can remember. During his spare time, he enjoys solving and sending us, including myself, math riddles to solve. Nothing like opening up a math riddle at eleven o'clock at night, right? But I do appreciate those, they get me thinking. But Locke also enjoys riding motorcycles and is a member of the Nassau County Fire Riders Motorcycle Club. What's important to Locke is his family, as evidenced by his wife being in attendance. There's nothing more, nothing he wouldn't do for his family, nothing in the world that's more important to him than his family and supporting the students that he works with and the teachers that he works with. So, when we talk to Locke, he's always in that classroom, just like the other supervisors that you met tonight, it's one of their primary roles. Being in classrooms to support teachers, supervise instruction, support students, provide feedback. One time Locke was visiting a sixth grade classroom, and at the end of the class, a student comes up to Locke and actually asks him to sign his math notebook. And Locke was like, well, why? The student replied, well, aren't you a famous mathematician? And there you go, the rest of the class gets up and lines up, so they all think Locke is a famous mathematician, and they want his signature, so be sure when you see Locke to get his signature. Locke is inspired daily by one of Dr. Kami's themes that we presented to our school district, which was the three Rs. Rigor, relevancy, and relationships. Locke finds that three Rs are not only applicable to education, but really can be applied to any real-life situation. Locke loves being an educator, his dream is to continue learning and to move up through Baldwin and remain with Baldwin. He wants to continue growing professionally, and of course contributing to all our initiatives here. So Locke, I want to thank you for your dedication, for all you do. Congratulations again to your family, and you know you had your baby not long ago, so we're honored to recognize Caitlin as well this evening. But congratulations on receiving tenure this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mignella, and thank you, everybody.
Congratulations, Locke, we love you.
Locke, I'll send you an email about an hour, you should respond.
Already did.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Mignella. Just two things as we go on and as the board comes back. I just want to share for the entire group. I hope everybody walks away with a few things, one is that there is a deep commitment on the part of the faculty and staff who get tenure in this district. And that they are deeply committed to our students and their families and our community. You know, I can speak on behalf of all the teachers, but in particular, the supervisors who received tenure tonight. Georgia and Jerry and Locke, you know, under Mr. Mignella's supervision, these are people that work twenty-four seven. And they are so dedicated to our community, and I could not be prouder to have them as part of our family. I want to make one last announcement, and then Mrs. O'Hagan, I'm gonna turn it back over to you. In the audience tonight, and as a result of the PAR that the board passed earlier, we appointed a new assistant principal to Plaza School, Anne Marie Swarini, who is in attendance. And we want to congratulate her and welcome her to our Baldwin family. An official letter will go out tomorrow to the Plaza community as well as the entire staff. So welcome Anne Marie and Mrs. O'Hagan, I turn it back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Kami. Okay, I mean, I don't want to go on and on because it's late, but this is such a wonderful evening. And as much as we begin with the saying goodbye to people that we've really loved and grown to know over the years, it is so exciting to see the people that are coming on board. And they just, everything that has been said about them is so impressive. It just makes me feel wonderful about the district and about the future of our district and the future for our kids. It's terrific. Okay, the next item on the agenda is comments and reports from the Board of Education. Alright, I will go first. Despite the fact that we have not been having meetings in person, there have been many activities that have gone on in the past month that one or more of us have attended. Senior, I've been at senior awards night, I attended a couple of the concerts that were performed in the circle at the high school. I was at the, in recognition of excellence program. And other things besides Baldwin activities. I was participated as a board member in the ESSA review. That is something that is required by the federal regulations that every year the ESSA program be reviewed and all of the stakeholders involved be present. So I was at that, and then this morning, I co-chair the Long Island Education Coalition. And our guest was Congressman Swazi. So we had a conversation with him about the SALT deductions and also about the issue of unaccompanied minors. So, that was my activities. Come on, I know I saw others.
Mary Jo did, just have. And then Annie and I had a Baldwin Chamber of Commerce luncheon today, and really met a lot of great people from our community, business owners from our community, a lot of, a lot of great discussions and networking. And I think I just interrupted Mrs. Pools, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, Tom, go ahead, finish. You're good?
I'm good.
You can finish, you can go on. I would like to start by just saying congratulations to everybody tonight. Best of luck to those retirees, what an exciting new chapter. And we're so excited about everybody who received tenure, so big congratulations to all. So this is, this is always a great time of the year, even though, you know, we're still doing it a little differently. I attended senior awards and I had the honor of giving out some awards, and that's always a great pleasure. And in recognition of excellence is always an amazing event, I was able to attend that as well. And then on Tuesday night, I attended Illuminated. Second year that we've done that event. And for anybody who has not seen that, it really just is incredible. In fact, uh, my daughter and I drove through. And we did the whole thing and asked if we could do it again. And the security guard said, sure, you can keep driving around all night if you want. So, so we did a circle a few times and uh, enjoyed it very, very much. That's it for me.
Mrs. Reed. Um, I just want to apologize to the community. I am usually at everything. But now that I have a job and I'm working Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and most events happen at the beginning of the week, I haven't been able to make a lot. But I did attend the in recognition of excellence dinner, which is a program which is fabulous. I mean, it's always nice to be able to recognize our most excellent staff or the sample of our most excellent staff members. Um, it's amazing to hear our students talk about the impact that our students, our, our staff members have had on our students. And I think this is the first meeting we've had since our budget vote. So would it be okay for me to thank the community? On behalf of the board for voting yes for our budget. And I think that's all I got.
Okay, that's that. Alright, let's move on. The Board of Education approves the recommendations for services of.
Mrs. O'H, I think Mrs. Dreska wanted to say.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's okay. Um, I was just going to say, um, without being repetitive, I attended pretty much all the events that were mentioned. Um, in addition to that, I also um, as a parent and board member, attended a middle school um, awards event. And also the middle school um, National Junior Honor Society event. So it was great. Uh, just, this is the, the best time of, one of the best times of the year when we're just attending a lot of, seeing students being recognized um, at all levels. So. And um, again, to everyone, congratulations to those that are going through tenure and even congratulations to those that are retiring um, into our new hires. So uh, it's always great to see all these changes and positive changes and, and new chapters happening. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now. The Board of Education approves the recommendations for services of the Committee on Special Education, sub- CSE, five oh four committee. And Committee on Preschool Special Education for services in January, February, March, April and May, twenty twenty-one, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mrs. Coles, uh, because this involves the names of individual children. We do not discuss it in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The Board of Education approves the home tutoring and special education service reports as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
By Mrs. Coles, seconded by Mrs. Reed. Again, this involves the names of individual students, so we do not discuss it in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, as a board, as board president, I'm calling for the consideration of a consent agenda for business items one through twenty-seven. So. Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mrs. Reed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Alright, could I have a motion to approve items one through twenty-seven?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mrs. Dreska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, then the next item on the agenda, uh, the Board of Education approves the recommendations for membership on the CPSC, CSE committees. For the twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mrs. Dreska. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Does anyone have anything under other? Okay, I just.
But we, did we not have comments from the community? I just wanted to make sure. I didn't.
I totally.
I apologize.
Over that, it was not listed at the end, unfortunately. It was listed somewhere else.
No comments.
We have, do we have any questions from, from the community?
No comments.
No.
There haven't, there are not. Okay, alright, thank you. Thank you for reminding me. Um, alright, if no one has anything else under other. I will just mention a couple of the upcoming dates. Um. All of these will be, as far as I know, will be virtual. Uh, the Varsity Banquet uh, on Thursday, June seventeenth. Um, the elementary schools moving, that, well, this isn't virtual, I'm sorry. Elementary schools moving up will be on Wednesday, June twenty-third at ten AM. The middle school moving up will be on Thursday, June twenty-fourth. Uh, there will be school for elementary on June, Thursday, June twenty-fourth, but there will be an early dismissal at eleven forty-five. And then the high school graduation will be on Friday, June twenty-fifth at the high school at five o'clock. The last day of school, Friday, June twenty-fifth. And our next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting will be on Wednesday, July the seventh, at the district office at eight PM. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I can't believe it's June already.
I know.
I'm sure the rest of the staff is like, thank God, but yeah.
I know, I know. What a crazy time. Alright, moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Night, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Good night.